The council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Please remain standing for an additional moment of silence for Jeff Taylor. I'm going to hand it over to Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a moment of silence that I'm absolutely beyond heartbroken to be leading before you all tonight. As Counselor O'Malley said, our colleague, Ari Taylor, Ward 5 City Counselor, tragically lost her husband, Jeff Taylor, this weekend. Malden lost an amazing community member, activist. Jeff was a husband, a father, a friend, a poet. He really showed up for everybody in our community. I was blessed to know him as a friend, and I think, you know, the thoughts that I'm hearing, the tributes that I'm hearing from folks in the community this week have been nothing short of amazing, just stories about how Jeff showed up for someone in their time of need, volunteered for a community event, just lent an ear or lent some artistic support to somebody who was trying to do what he does. And, you know, words honestly fail me because Jeff is somebody who, along with the rest of his family, just gives back to so many others, and to think about him not being with us anymore is something I really am having trouble contemplating every day when I wake up. As most of you know, they have three children, Phoebe, who just turned six, Charlotte, who is 12, and Emily, who just turned 18. They go to the Linden School and Malden Catholic. I know the school communities have showed up to support them and surround them with love. There is a website if folks want to find ways to help, which is welovethetaylorfamily.com. Like I said, folks have been showing up for the last three days, but really, they're going to need all of us, and I can't stress enough how much the ongoing love and support is going to be so needed and so meaningful to them. So just in memory of my amazing friend Jeff and the entire Taylor family, would love to have a moment of silence in his memory.
And we have one additional moment of silence that's going to be given by Counselor Seika.
Thank you. It's been a tough week in Malden, that's for sure, and it's only Tuesday. This morning, we were all made aware that Maria Luis, the special assistant to the mayor, lost her father last evening. Gerardo was a lifelong Ward 8 resident of Easton Ave. He, I'm going to miss driving by his house and seeing him in the gutter sweeping because he was 91 years old and he was still doing it just a few shorts months ago back in the fall. I would call and yell at Maria that her 90-year-old father was outside in the middle of Easton Ave in the gutter with his broom shoveling, sweeping the dirt out of the gutter. He was, I think he's been married for about 73 years to his love of his life. Maria and her family, they're a staple in the Woody community. He was deeply loved and cherished by all who knew him, and he lived a vibrant life full of family memories and Italian traditions. He leaves behind a legacy of kindness, strength, and unwavering love for his family and friends. There are no services scheduled at this moment, but I'm sure we'll all be paying attention to our email to make sure that we can let everyone know when those are. Thank you.
The clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Seika.
Yeah.
Counselor Seminelli.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yep.
He's online with us via video. Counselor Taylor is not with us tonight. Counselor Winslow?
Here.
Counselor President O'Malley?
Here.
And because Counselor Spatafora is with us via video, we will be doing everything by roll call vote this evening.
Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. So just to be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. First order of business is guests, citizens' achievement, and announcements. I believe we have representatives from the Community Preservation Committee who will appear before the council to give a presentation on projects currently before the board. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Rachel Running, and I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and I'm here with our manager, Daniel Koff, who's going to show you a slideshow of some of our kind of purpose and work shortly, but I wanted to start by thanking our amazing all-volunteer committee. So that's Ina Babaskaya, Sam Waters, Monique Ching, Brendan Brett, Ronnie Rajverma, and Mark Lonhorm. And they put in so many hours, everyone on the committee, both at meetings and in preparation in their own time, and I'm really lucky to be able to serve with this really awesome group. And I would be nowhere without Daniel's amazing, skilled, and just steadfast work, so I really appreciate everyone who makes this committee run. So the CPC is unique because we get to consider and recommend projects in Malden backed by real funding from our local CPA tax, which is an opportunity and a responsibility that we don't take lightly. We're lucky to be able to collaborate with you all, with Mayor Christensen in his office, as well as Alex Pratt, the OSPCD, and all the wonderful city staff and residents as well, to make this a successful venture. And together, we're all working towards this kind of shared vision of equitable, greener, and thriving city for Malden. So I just wanted to give a little intro, and I'll let Daniel, who's kind of got all the brains here, do our full presentation.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Council President, City Council. We are excited to be here today and talk to you about CPC. So I'll provide a brief overview. This is a preview of our information session that we give annually, updated every year with updated financial information, and we'll be giving it next at our April meeting as we launch the kickoff of the pre-application process for FY '26. So I'll give you a brief intro to what CPC is, even though you all are familiar, and to the committee and to the Preservation Act and the history of our funding. So as Rachel explained, we have nine seats on CPC, four of which are statutory members, five of which are at-large. And I will note that if, that the state law mandates that a member of the Parks Commission must serve on CPC. So I know you all are considering reanimating our Parks Commission in Malden, and if we do that, I would advocate that we also look, revisit the CPC ordinance to address that difference. I will note that come March of next year, we will have some seats coming open for the at, some at-large seats. Some folks will be termed out at that point, so let that timeline maybe put a fire under you to revisit the CPC ordinance by next March would be amazing, would be great timing. So there are two ways to talk about, there's two acronyms involved here, the CPA and the CPC. A lot of this is very confusing. The community, the CPA is the Community Preservation Act, so that enables cities and towns to create the CPA fund, which is managed by the Community Preservation Committee, the CPC. So Malden has three, the Malden's fund, CPA fund, is somewhat unique. It's one of five communities in the state that has three potential funding sources, a 1% surcharge tax on property. So CPA allows communities to institute a surcharge tax between 1% and 3%. So Malden has the minimum 1% surcharge tax. There's also, the state matches, provides a match to communities that have a CPA fund, communities that have a 3% surcharge actually get additional state match. And then what makes Malden one of five communities that are unique is that there's the potential for funds from the operating account of the city to be placed into the CPA account. It hasn't been done with us, it has hardly ever been done in the state, but it is allowable. So what we do in Malden CPC, what our CPC does is we manage the CPA fund and its distribution. We develop a, we have a CPA plan, and we update it annually based on our priorities for the city, so we do an annual survey. We'll provide a link to that at the end. We're still accepting survey submissions. We ensure that we're following state law. There's a lot of requirements for this fund that is somewhat unique, and CPC, the members, recommend projects that meet these criteria, and then the mayor and you all, City Council, approve those recommendations either at the recommended amount or below, but not above. And CPC also educates and assists the community in submission of applications. So like I was saying earlier, CPA funds are somewhat restricted. There are, depending on account, three or four categories of funding, whether you want to place open space and outdoor recreation in the same category separate, and then there's affordable housing and historic preservation. And then there are uses for those funds, so you can acquire, create, preserve, support, rehabilitate, or restore projects using those funds, and whether you can use those, whether those uses, those uses are allowable by category, so there's some differentiation here. So for example, you can support an affordable housing category, so you can, but you cannot support the creation of an historic property, that doesn't really make sense, they should already exist, and you can't support the creation of open space or outdoor recreation. So we can't use our funding for staff time on open space or recreation projects, and that is why. If anyone has any questions about this, I'm happy to talk folks through it.
I just wanted to clarify. So you can, you can use it to create open space, but you can't use it for ongoing support of open space, because you said you can't use it to support the creation of?
Support is often used, it kind of denotes administration funds that are, yes, staff to manage the project.
Okay. Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I should note, there are much more stringent requirements when CPA funds are used to acquire properties, acquire open space, acquiring historic preservation or affordable housing. If CPA funds are used for acquisition, then a restriction must be placed on that property. The law is a little more vague when funds are used to create, preserve, support, rehabilitate, or restore. Yeah. So moving on, CPA, over the course of its history, has raised approximately $8.5 million up until this year. So as you can see here, our surcharge, the amount that we've collected in surcharge revenue has steadily crept up every year, and the amount that the state has matched has fluctuated greatly. We saw a bump during the COVID years when there was some surplus, and then now it's going back down again. This year, the estimate is at 15.9%, so it's down even further. So in terms of our expenditure history, one thing I'll note here is that you'll see we have taken in revenue of 8.5 million and we have expended 8.7. That is because we have taken out a loan in the form of a bond against our future revenue. So that means we have essentially expended more than we've raised because we will raise in the future that amount to cover the bond. So we have, so far, the projects that have been allocated, almost, well, 69% of those funds have gone to open space and recreation projects, 17% to affordable housing, and 14% to historic preservation over the course of CPAs in Malden's history. Quick look at the geographic distribution of those projects, something that CPC really values is to fund projects in each of the city's wards to make sure that these funds are geographically distributed, and I think so far, we're doing a decent job, although definitely want to encourage more applications from wards in the southern part of the city there.
And Ward 8.
And Ward 8, yeah. So looking ahead to FY '26, we estimate that we will receive about $1 million in revenue, and that will be distributed according to the state law minimums requirement. So the state law requires that you spend or set aside 10% of your total fund, funding each year for each of the projects in each of the three categories. You can appropriate five, up to 5% for administrative and operating expenses, and then the remainder goes into the budgeted reserve. The budgeted reserve, more language, when it rolls over to the next year, becomes the fund balance. So looking ahead, what this looks like in terms of how much we have to spend on new projects, so we have to reserve for the next, now nine years, it was, the bond was a 10-year period, so we're one year into it, so for the next nine years, we're going to have to set aside money from the budgeted reserve to pay for debt service. So that leaves a little less funding available for new projects than we would have otherwise, than the total amount of revenue that we'll receive. Looking at what is rolling over in each of the, so if we're looking at the total amount available for new projects in FY '26, we will want to add the new revenue for FY '26, and we'll want to add how much is rolling over in each of those funds. And so what that looks like is this. So we will be allocating, you know, so this shows that we have, yeah, I need, we have $1.1 million, 1.15, available reserves-ish, and the total for, that we'll be able to, total available for new projects is about 1.9 million in FY '26. Some of that will be reserved for projects that are in specific categories. So the application process takes about a calendar year, starts with a pre-application where you just fill out a form with basic information about your project, and that helps the CPC determine eligibility. And at that point, we're able to provide a letter of approval for folks to submit a full application. So the pre-application period is, will open at our April meeting, at our next meeting, and will go until June, and then folks have the summer to complete their full application, submitting by the second week in September, so CPC can start evaluating those full applications in September. Then all applicants are invited to answer questions and attend a public hearing, so they can also respond to public comment, and then CPC reviews their full application and the answer to the questions, and votes on deliberates and votes on recommendations to the mayor and city council for funding by the end of that fiscal year. And then, once the project is approved by city council, applicants get an award letter and a grant agreement to officially begin the project. So, yeah, this is what it looks like in terms of the calendar. April 16th is when the FY '26 application process will begin with the pre-applications going till June. You have the summer to fill out the full application, and then awards are typically made in the winter, so grant agreements can be signed in the spring. This is a general timeline. I should note that off-cycle applications may be accepted upon the discretion of the So what CPC is looking for in an application, first and foremost, must be an allowable use, has to be, has to, you know, be legally, we have to be able to legally fund this project. The application must be complete, and every question answered has to align with the goals and priorities that the city has laid out in the CPC plan, other city planning documents. We are currently in the process of aligning our CPC plan to the Open Space and Recreation Plan that's in progress, so that should be easier in the future. Leveraging funding from other sources is really important. CPC really appreciates when applications come in that show some level, some other funding sources, or at least they're applying to other funding sources so CPC funds can be used as a match, rather than just funding the entire project. And then CPC definitely appreciates evidence of support from other city residents, departments, boards, commissions, and of course, you all. You all are the shepherds of a lot of the projects that happen on the ground, and so it's really impactful to have your voice in the application process in support of projects that are coming from your wards. And then, of course, that benefits the entire community. So some of the priorities we're looking for in the project, incorporating sustainable design, protecting natural resources, addressing an urgent need, cleaning up contaminated land, revitalizing, reusing existing buildings, being a catalyst for transformative change, using renewable energy, expanding permeable surface, increasing trees and vegetation, taking time of, taking advantage of a time-sensitive opportunity, and cooperating with other groups and neighboring municipalities. So try to help with, you know, if you're doing good things, CPC will generally want to support you. What CPC doesn't do is CPC doesn't initiate projects. We ask residents or other city departments to submit applications. CPC doesn't hold community meetings outside of public hearings. Public hearings are the way that CPC can invite public comment, but we look to applicants to gather support on their own for their own submissions, and then, so CPC can evaluate that. And we don't act as a contractor. We can provide technical assistance to keep the projects moving, but the grant, yeah, and adhere to the terms of the grant agreement, so we can kind of debate some terms in the grant agreement process, but once that's signed, we leave it up to the applicant. Often, the city can go, especially when the city is applying for grants, the city receives grants from CPC, that city liaison serves as the project manager, and that work goes through the controller's office to go out to bid and follow procurement laws. So for more information, encourage everyone to go to our webpage on the city's website, citymalden.org/cpc, follow us on Facebook, email us anytime. You can also email me, dan@cityofmalden, sorry, D.Koff, K-O-F-F, at cityofmalden.org. And we hold public hearings every third Wednesday of the month. People, anyone's welcome to attend in person or online.
Public meetings, not hearings.
Yeah, public meetings, yeah. We have public hearings once a year, and we have an info session about once a year. We also do applicant workshops over the summer, so lots of opportunities to get involved, and please take our survey if you haven't already. All right.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Questions.
Any? No? Oh. Counselor Linehan.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that was great, and I get like a lot of questions from residents saying, like, how can I figure out how to apply if I had an idea? I'm just going to send them this video of this meeting now, because I think that's a great overview, and I also just wanted to give a quick plug. We do have an open seat, as you mentioned, and we've had limited interest, but just want to make one more announcement since we're on TV, that if folks are interested, they can reach out to, I guess, any of us, but as Chair of Personnel, they're technically supposed to come to me, a letter of interest and resume from the wards that you mentioned, which is 2, 7, and 1. I got you. So just couldn't pass up the opportunity to let folks know, because it is a great board to serve on.
Thank you.
And you're also looking for residents from Ward 4, correct, or?
Ward 4, 7.
Okay, I really messed it up, sorry. 1, 2, 4, and 7.
1, 2, 4, and 7. So any Ward 4 residents, please? The slide misses 4.
Oh.
We don't have 4 on there.
Yeah, 4. You're right, 4 is missing.
No worries.
We're a really fun committee, so you should join us.
Yes. Again, we're happy to have a one-on-one with anyone who's interested, who wants to learn more.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to one subject matter relative to the evening's agenda, and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We have one person signed up for public comment and four email written submissions.
Great, we'll take the person, the person who's here in person.
Lauren McGill-Cuddy, please.
My name is Lauren McGill-Cuddy. I live at 10 Rosemont Street in Ward 4. I am appearing on my own behalf as a concerned citizen of Malden about information that I have acquired in my work as the clerk of Friends of Felsmore Heights. You will be shortly hearing a letter which Friends of Felsmore Heights sent to the council, and I just wanted to comment in addition to that letter. The city is currently in the process of preparing a joint home rule petition and a set of ordinances that will together greatly revise the governance structure of the city, and my concern as a citizen is about the process for this. In some of the meetings that I have attended of the Joint Charter and Rules and Ordinance Committee, I have been the only person in the room who is neither a city employee nor a member of the council. That does not seem to me to meet the standard that is set in the proposed Home Rule petition, which says that there shall be public meetings and open forums and workshops, and my concern is that these changes, which are significant, although I think they are important changes and useful changes, are being made without enough public involvement to make sure that they are really acceptable to the public. And that's really all I have to say on my own behalf. The rest of what I have to say, you will be able to read in the letter that's coming from the whole Board of 4, Friends of Felsmore Heights. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
So with that, the first written submission is from the Friends of Felsmore Heights of two sixty-seven Hawthorne Street. It says, Friends, to the Malden City Council, regarding Paper four-four-three dash twenty-four, Friends of Felsmere Heights urge the City Council to return these documents to the Joint Committee for additional work and initiation of a public review process to address inadvertent omissions and to ensure that the public has participated in the process as described in the proposed home rule petition. Certain capabilities of city departments found in the charter, some of which are required by state law, should not be subject to dissolution or abridgement by ordinance. For example, Sections twenty and twenty-one of the charter permits the Public Works Commission to exercise the City Council's powers of eminent domain under Section fourteen of Chapter forty and Chapter seventy-nine of the general laws. This authority is not included in the proposed ordinances. There is no reference in those proposed ordinances that create commissions regarding the rotation of commission members or their replacements if a commissioner does not fulfill their term. The proposed new ordinances do not reference several important activities: planning and implementing new parks, coordination between the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Public Works Commission, placing a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission on the Community Preservation Committee as required, making management plans or usage regulations for parks and other public land available to the public. This superficial review of the ordinances causes us to believe that a more detailed review is warranted. We also believe that Malden will be stronger if its citizens are well aware of the proposed changes to these critical city-defining documents, and have an adequate opportunity to participate in their review as described in the home rule petition, with respect Friends of Felsmere Heights Board. The next three papers are regarding the resolve that is numbered as Paper one fifty-four dash twenty-five. Hello, I would like to submit the following public comment to be read into the record at tonight's City Council meeting regarding declaring a transgender Day of Visibility on March thirty-first in Malden. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment and to the City Council members for their thoughtful consideration of the resolution introduced by Counselor-at-Large Carrie McDonald. As a trans non-binary resident of Malden, I would like to share my enthusiastic support for officially recognizing a transgender Day of Visibility. I came to terms with my gender identity in my thirties, and I wish that I had witnessed this kind of representation in my hometown growing up. Celebrating and uplifting the diversity of identities that make up the trans community is one small but significant step we can take as a community to publicly acknowledge that there are, that all are welcome and actively supported in Malden. Given the current climate of threats to the safety of our community, it is incredibly important at this moment that we make it clear Malden is a safe haven for trans identifying folks of all ages. Thank you, Megan Aki of one ninety-eight Mount Vernon Street. Around three years ago, a right-wing social media influencer made a post about a specific hospital spreading outright lies about their gender-affirming care program. Not too soon after harassment and threats followed suit, on August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, this hospital received a bomb threat over the phone. As a result, they went under lockdown, had to refuse new patients for their safety, doctors performing surgery under even worse stress, bedside patients scared out of their minds. You know what hospital this was? It was Bos- Boston Children's Hospital. Yes, a children's hospital, and if you want me to be local about it, I work there, and some kids from Malden families probably go there. What caused all of these incidents to come about? Transphobia. So yes, International Transgender Day of Visibility on March thirty-first should be celebrated. They should be recognized. They should know that despite all of the harassment, all the threats, the hurtful comments, we see you, we care about you, we love you. That is submitted by Samantha LeBlanc, thirty Daniel Street. And the last one says, I wanted to voice support for making the Trans Day of Visibility a recognized day here in Malden. When we recognize and uphold our trans siblings, we uphold the best in each other and allow everyone to show their true selves. This is a good thing. As a cisgender queer person living in Malden, I want all members of our community to feel safe living their lives out loud. There's a lot for queer people to fear right now, and sometimes a spotlight can feel unsafe, but we should have a spotlight for people that want to step into it and create a safe space for them to do so. Trans queer people deserve to feel loved and adored. I hope this resolution passes quickly and easily. Let's uplift each other. Katie Dillon, one ninety-eight Mount Vernon Street. That's it. Consent agenda.
Our next order of business is the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one appointment to be referred to Personnel, the Personnel Committee, and one order to be referred to finance. Does any Counselor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? Seeing none, and Counselor Seega's motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved.
The consent agenda has been approved. The next order of business is motions, orders, and resolutions.
Paper one five-three dash twenty-five, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, Title twelve, Chapter twelve, Section oh nine oh subsection B, off-site off-street parking lots in Title twelve, Chapter twelve, Section oh two oh subsection I, general off-street parking requirements is hereby amended as follows.
So this might feel like Groundhog Day to some of y'all, and to some degree it is. Technically, we tried to vote on this the last time we met, but we had so many zoning ordinances that had went to our Planning Board for recommendation that this one kind of got caught up in it, and we thought it went for a hearing, but actually hadn't. And so we caught that after we voted on it, so we'd like to refer this to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing. It will then come back out where we can then take final action on that. So I can't make any motions, but on Counselor Simonelli's motion to refer this to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing, seconded by Counselor Seega, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing, and seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That paper has been referred unanimously. Next order of business.
Paper one five-four dash twenty-five, resolved, that is the sense of the Malden City Council that Malden celebrates International Transgender Day of Visibility on March thirty-first. Malden is home to many transgender, non-binary, intersex, and gender non-conforming people of all ages. As members of the LGBTQIA+ community, transgender Maldonians contribute to the life and vitality of our community as residents, business owners, students, teachers, volunteers, religious leaders, public servants, and more. We affirm our city as a welcoming community that embraces people across the spectrum of gender identity and expression. At a time when transgender Americans are under direct threat and when some seek to entirely erase their existence, visibility is more important than ever. It reminds us all that transgender people have been and will continue to be valued members of our Malden community. We take this opportunity to honor that visibility and to condemn these attacks in the strongest possible terms. Our city will uphold the civil rights which protect transgender people from discrimination under Massachusetts General Law and Title seven of the Federal nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act. Transgender Day of Visibility recognizes the presence and contributions of transgender Maldonians, even those who do not feel safe enough to be publicly visible. In recognition, we reaffirm our commitment to do everything we can to ensure transgender members of our community are safe and able to live freely as their authentic selves. This was sponsored by Counselor McDonald.
Counselor McDonald for the paper.
Thank you, Counsel President. I have to say it was a great privilege to submit this resolution. I thank you to my colleagues for your cosponsorship. It was a great privilege to submit it, not only as City Counsel, but myself as a non-binary and transgender person who uses they and them pronouns, as you may have seen in my email signature. When I came out last year, I was very grateful for the support that I received in this community. That's not an experience that everyone gets to have. Transgender Day of Visibility is a way to celebrate the presence, the contributions of the many trans people, and there are many trans people in Malden. It was created as a counterpoint to the many negative narratives about trans folks in our culture and in our society. Folks may be familiar with what's called Transgender Day of Remembrance in the fall, so this is in the spring as a positive counterpoint. We live in what is truly a welcoming community, and that is so important for us to affirm as public leaders in a very scary time, in which the threats seem to come daily from the federal government, from hostile governments at state, it's the state level and other parts of the country as well. And so it's especially a tough time, I think, to be a trans or queer young person, a youth. And so for those youth, you're in my heart and my prayers every day, and want to make sure that we're doing all we can to show our solidarity and support for you. I understand that people are very different levels of understanding in our community about the spectrum of gender identity, you might say, and what these things mean, and that's okay. Really, what we're trying to do here today is I hope just say, "We see you" to our fellow residents. If you are interested in learning more or understanding more about transgender people, I really recommend the group PFLAG. That's Parents and Families of Lesbians and Gays. They have some great kind of like beginner-level resources that you can check out. So this is a way to show our support. I want to say a special thanks to Malden Pride, who did like a petition that folks could sign. A hundred and thirty people have signed that petition so far, and there's, and you can still do so. And I hope that this is an opportunity for all of us to have a moment of lightness and celebration in what is an incredibly difficult time. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. I think we have some lights. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you, Counsel McDonald, for bringing this forward. You know, I'm, I support you. I support everyone here in Malden. This is very important to come out, and it was very brave of you to do that, and our community to do that, everyone who signed the petition, because, like you said, it's more important now more than ever. I have a nephew who I think about every day. He's young, he's scared, and so every time they see an adult or older people standing up, it just means so much. So I am so happy to support this, and I just want to thank you again, and thank you to the community. Our community is special. Malden Pride is amazing, that group. I love collaborating with them, and we are so lucky to live here where we are, and hopefully everybody is in support of this. Thank you so much again.
Thank you very much. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to be a cosponsor on this, and just want to echo what so many have said. I also wanted to just share that I think one of the things that is valuable about a resolution like this is that it provides kind of a safe opportunity for folks in the community who may be looking for a lever through which to ask questions or to learn more. I've had outreach from folks genuinely seeking to understand kind of why is this important, and, you know, does this really affect people in our community, and genuinely coming from a place of wanting to know and understand. And that's really important, too. I've had some super encouraging conversations over the last week as a result of this being docketed on our agenda, so I really do want to thank Counselor McDonald for working on this and for Malden Pride, which just adds so much to our community. I did also just want to very briefly read something from Counselor Taylor, who couldn't be here tonight, but really didn't want to let the opportunity pass without letting a comment be included. So on behalf of Counselor Taylor, she states, "I'm extremely proud to be cosponsoring this resolve tonight. I believe that by recognizing and affirming our transgender and non-binary community members' existence, we are taking a much-needed step to show that we are a welcoming city who values the contributions of all who live here. I look forward to reinforcing this resolve with actions in the coming months." Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, I really want to thank Counsel McDonald for bringing this forward. You know, I grew up at a time where many people, gay, trans, were not comfortable speaking up or being authentic selves. So many in the closet at that time, and really because I think in part of the AIDS crisis, people really had to, you know, they, recognize that. But I think, you know, I just saw, as I learned from friends and colleagues, that finding their gender identity was something that they explored and thought about and were very sincere. And I just always think about, you know, our Declaration of Independence of people pursuing life, liberty, and happiness. And that's what I know of my friends and colleagues and as well as my own relatives, that that's what they've done. And I think that's what's really the stating, is that we are supporting people who've searched their own souls and say, "This is who I am," and we need to support people to be who they are, and that's why I appreciate this. So thank you, Counsel McDonald. Thank for colleagues who are supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Crowe.
Sorry. Wrong time. So I just wanted to say thank you, Counsel McDonald, for putting this forward, and really for the impactful comments of my colleagues, and I just wanted to be added as a sponsor in full support.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd like to be added on as a sponsor myself. And you know, I agree with everything that everybody was saying up here, you know? People are who they are, and they should be accepted and should be recognized. I mean, you know, there's a, unfortunately, there's a stigma thrown at it, just like there's a stigma which I suffer from, substance abuse, the allergies of substance abuse. And, you know, it's, you know, it's tough, you know? I mean, when you're too funny, you're high. When you're not funny enough, you're high. You gotta go hide from people and then not talk to people. So, you know, or just what people think about you. And, you know, there's no, there's no place for that in our society as we grow as Americans. So I think it's a good paper. You know, I think everybody should be treated equally and fair. So, yeah, I support the paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Simonelli. Just from the chair, thank you to all the sponsors and the main sponsor. I just want to give an example to some people out there who might be having trouble learning how to say "they/them" as a singular pronoun. You know, relearning words can sometimes be hard, and this is just an example of something that's kind of helped me, not to say that I'm perfect by any means, definitely not as someone who's still learning. But a common example of using "they/them" in the singular is when someone who is unknown may have left an object behind. So it's common for you to say, "Someone left their water bottle." Someone being a singular noun, "their" being a singular pronoun. So it's a great example. It just doesn't also apply for when it's someone who's unknown. It can also be when you don't know what their gender is. So when you're ever having trouble of how to say a "they/them" singular, think of "Somebody left their water bottle." That's just a trick that I learned. So on Counsel McDonald's motion to pass this
Second.
...resolve, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, all those, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. The resolve passes unanimously.
Enrolled ordinances. Paper one twenty-two dash twenty-five, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, nine point zero four point oh one oh nuisances affecting public health, is hereby amended to provide for the use of rain barrels, exempting them from the nuisance category.
On Counsel Linehan's motion to ordain the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Crowe, the clerk will call the roll.
Counseler Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli, who's left the room. Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That passes unanimously, or is ordained unanimously. Our next up is communications.
Paper one five-five dash twenty-five, communication. During the meeting of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the council unanimously voted to enter into executive session with legal counsel for the city in accordance with Exemption seven, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements in order to act on the periodic review of those executive session minutes listed herein to determine if release of records is appropriate at this time. March 4th, 2025, Paper 117-25. February 25th, 2025, Paper 116-25. February 11th, 2025, Paper 83-25. February 4th, 2025, Paper 61-25. September 26th, 2023, Paper 335-23. September 12th, 2023, Paper 316-23. October 25th, 2022, Paper 425-22. A motion was made by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Crowe, to retain said meeting minutes and continued nondisclosure due to the determination that publication would defeat the lawful purpose of the executive session, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, as litigation is still pending in the case the minutes referred to, and attorney-client privilege remains. The motion was approved by the following roll-call vote. Yea. Cologne Hayes. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Seega. Seminelli. Spetafora. Taylor. Winslow. O'Malley. Nay. Zero. Absent. Condon.
So I'm going to take up a motion to receive this and place it on file, but it does bring up something that I am, and the clerk are also very on top of. We are required to do periodic reviews of our executive session meeting records for public disclosure. There are a lot of them. We have done them periodically, but we do know that we need to do these regularly, so we're working on that, and this is part of that. And, you know, the reason why these are coming up now is that they were requested under the open meeting law, so that kind of brought these to the top of the bunch, but we are working on other ones, too. And so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that we are working on it, and we appreciate everyone's patience when it comes to that. Is there a motion to receive this and place it on file?
Motion.
On Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor McDonald, the clerk will call the roll.
Crowe. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli, who's still out of the room. Counselor Spetafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes. That has been received and placed on file. Next order of business is committee reports.
The standing committees on charter review and rules and ordinance serving in a joint session to whom was referred Papers 418 and 443, series of 2024, and 85, series of 2025, having considered the same, make the following report. One, under the authority of Paper 418-24, to develop necessary ordinances as needed to modify the city charter, committee presents the newly-written Paper 157-25 as the product of that task. To add MCC 2.12.200 Veteran Service Commissioner, committee recommends this paper out favorably to the full council. Two, committee recommends Paper 443, series of 2024, out favorably as amended to the full council. Three, with the order of Paper 85-25 having been completed, the committee recommends placing that paper on file and presents the newly-written Paper 158-25 as the product of that order to complete a reorganization of the Health and Human Services and Inspection Services Departments. Committee recommends Paper 158, series of 2025, as was drafted in committee, out favorably to the full council. And I will correct myself on item number one, the Veteran Service Commissioner. Paper is being reported out favorably as amended in committee.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli. Yes. Counselor Spetafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
The first paper is 157-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden is hereby amended by adding 2.12.200 Veterans Service Coordinator, to include the following.
Sorry. On Counselor Winslow for the committee. Or do you, yeah?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Oh, I turned you on.
So I'm just going to step back a little bit because there's a lot going on here. So as you recall, we actually started off talking about Paper 4324. The mayor's office had approached us back in the fall when I was council president about some sort of antiquated parts of our city charter that were proving to be, you know, somewhat in need to update. We had things related to the police commissioner, the fire commissioner, Public Works Commission. I mean, and to update and do some reorganization, since those things existed in the city charter, and the mayor really thought that we should tackle those. And as you recall, just about this time last year, we were actually trying to come up with a whole new city charter. That sort of effort had sputtered two or three times, so this was trying to be a more target approach to really look at the charter and the portions that were the most antiquated. So that's sort of what got the ball rolling. And then, as it so happened, you know, in the context of having our, you know, health commissioner retiring, the thought was that was an opportunity to do some more reorganization and tackle reorganizing our Inspection Services Department and our Health Department. So these things have sort of merged together. And so that's really, that's really these two major efforts of doing some charter updating plus reorganization related to the Health and Inspection Services Departments merged into this effort. And one of the things that came out of that was we, in reorganizing particularly what's going to be the Health and Human Services Department, the decision was to look at various coordinators we have in the city in terms of our senior center, our teen center, and have those coordinators, rather than reporting directly to the mayor's office, to first report through a new Health and Human Services Director. And one of the things we realized is that we have what's now called the Veteran Service Commissioner, Kevin Jarvis, and it made sense that to add that role as someone under the wing of the Health and Human Services Department. So in the process of the Rules and Ordinance Committee and the Charter Review Committee, you know, doing this whole look at reorganization and kind of cleaning out the charter a little bit, we realized it would be good to add a provision specifically related to the veteran services. Right now, there's just one line in our ordinance that says Veteran Service Commissioner, and that the responsibility is to implement the law that, it actually dates back to the Civil War, that each city and town in the Commonwealth has to have a veteran service agent. So that was really the impetus. So what you see before you tonight on release of Veteran Services, a portion, is we've taken language that was sort of drafted for the senior center coordinator and the teen center coordinator, and then just wrote that up for the Veteran Service Coordinator. So we, you know, and we know, everybody's familiar with the work of Kevin Jarvis. I mean, he, the prime role is to help veterans and their families adapt to civilian life here in Malden, and that is supporting them to pursue, you know, federal, state, and local resources to help with that. And so there's a lot of programs that veterans can take advantage of, so that is one key role. You know, another role we see is often there's events that the, you know, between Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and that type of thing that Kevin gets involved in. So we really, you know, this section is really written up to recognize the work of the Veteran Services Department. What we decided, right now it's described as a Veteran Service Commissioner. Under the law, it's actually, they call it a Veterans Agent. So we decided, because we have a senior center coordinator, a teen center coordinator, that to be consistent, this position would be a Veteran Service Coordinator. So that, the basic thing is just to really have a description. So that was sort of the first thing. Because that wasn't in either paper, we decided to draft that. Tonight, we reviewed that, made some changes related to some language related to the designating this as a coordinator position. The committee then voted on that amendment and voted out the paper favorably. So I would make a motion that we first, I guess here we would, just trying to think what we got to do here. We...
I'm not sure if you have to take a vote to amend, because this is the first time you're presenting it as a committee.
Okay. All right. So then I guess I would make a motion that we, the committee, would be moved to enroll inconsistent with the committee report, that we would be creating a Veteran Service Coordinator position consistent with the report from the committee. So that would be my motion.
Counsel, Counselor Winslow's motion is a second, seconded by Counselor Seminelli. Is there any conversation or debate on the motion? So from the chair, I know it's not directly related to veteran services, but we did have some public comment about the charter review and amendment.
Okay. I'm going to come back to that as we go through the whole papers.
No. But you're talking, but this is the first charter change, right?
This doesn't involve a charter change because it's not part of the charter. This is just a, this is just an ordinance change.
Oh, okay. Understood.
All right, yeah. But I will address that, so I think let's take a moment, let's just...
So this one is not impacted by the, this is just an ordinance change?
The Veteran Service Commissioner is not part of the charter right now.
Oh, okay.
So this is just, what we're doing is since we are writing an ordinance related to the Health and Human Services Department and assigning the Veteran Service Coordinator, we just felt it was important that we have a whole new ordinance that, so that's...
Understood.
It's really, it's part of the reorganization. Some of the reorganization is driven, we need to update the charter to do the reorganization, but this isn't that.
Understood. So on Counselor Winslow's motion to enroll, seconded by Counselor Seminelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spetafora. Oh, he seemed to get booted for a second. Counselor Spetafora, would you like to vote to...
Yes. Yes.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, that paper has been enrolled.
All right.
The next paper is 443-24, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden is hereby amended as noted in the body of said paper effective upon successful passage of a home rule petition approving corresponding amendments to the city charter.
All right.
Counselor Winslow.
So this is the paper related to the charter changes. So this is, so this is the paper. We have, there were various sections related to Parks and Recreation, and this was Parks and Recreation, Public Works Department, Public Works Commission, Engineering, and the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Traffic Commission. So this, that was, these were the ones that were really driven. These are departments or roles and responsibilities that are described right now in the charter. So the general gist of related to charter is actually to basically strike those commissions and roles and responsibility from the charter, and then substitute ordinance provisions. So that's really what the whole thing is there. So this is the committee. I think we did at least three or four meetings where we went section by section, had a lot of input from both the Rules and Ordinance Committee, members of the Charter Review Committee, which included Ron Hogan from Strategic, their Strategic Planning Officer, and Carol Lan, as the clerk. So we went, you know, section by section and amended those, the proposed ordinance that Ron Hogan had drafted up to create some clarity there. We did things like, we realized that, you know, now in the city, you know, traditionally there was sort of a public work department that, under it, had a water department. Now, the thought is we have a Department of Water Utilities. So we teased out the roles and responsibilities between those departments. We streamlined some of the things in terms of our Public Works Commission that, you know, under the initial language, like lighting and some very specific kind of maintenance tasks were listed under the Public Works Commission. We separated those things out and made sure that was clear was the Public Works Department responsibility. So we just went through in detail, tried to make the roles as clear as possible, and basically following some of the same format through each department of just saying that kind of what their mission is, and then maybe, you know, various bullet points of what their major tasks are. So we, you know, we went through that very thoroughly, and it's in your package or whatever. So we went, you know, deliberately, had very good conversations, and made a lot of different amendments. I could say we, you know, we tried to make that with as much clarity. I know the Friends of the Fell's Letter, we actually discussed that a little bit tonight. You know, there is some things, you know, we're sorting out responsibilities of the Public Work Commission and what now would be a Parks Commission, which I think everybody, a lot of the people in the council are favorable to, but there are other sort of impacts in terms of the Community Preservation Committee and that. We discussed that, and we thought that maybe the best way to follow up with the Friends thing is like, we, if this all goes forward and we enroll and then send, get the charter, the home rule petition passed, we'll first have to establish a Parks Commission. And then, as those things are going forward, then we'll know, under state law, if you have a Parks Commission, someone from the Parks Commission has to be on the Community Preservation Committee. So it seems like it makes a lot of sense to first make sure we get the home rule petition passed before we start teasing out that from the Community Preservation Committee. And that, you know, we don't know whether the legislature would take this up and pass it by June or December. So I think the thought was that, you know, one of the great things about what we're doing is we are, you know, deleting a lot of these provisions that are in the charter and putting it into the ordinances, which gives the city much more expeditious ways to update and organize things. So the thought is that we will, we will, you know, take up those more specific things related to the Parks Commission and the Community Preservation Commission, once we have legally reauthorized Parks Commission, and then have appointees, and then can work out the role with the CPC. So that was a little bit of discussion in committee tonight, so we did take that comment into consideration. So I say we did a very deliberate thing. I mean, I'd say that, you know, we have not had a specific community outreach on all this. I mean, I think it's, you know, I think this is sort of almost the third effort we've made over the years. I know there was the Charter Review Committee, I think Counsel O'Malley helped lead up. I did it as council president, and this was, this is sort of a third effort to just do a more limited thing. There's been a lot of discussion. It kind of got off track when we had COVID. I think we've put a lot of effort into this, and, you know, I think the challenge is when you get into this minutia, I just don't know how much interest, you know, that broadened this out, and it's been very difficult, as we see, to get to this point. So I think that the fact that we have a good synchronicity between the mayor and the council, and these things are, I say, really mostly in clearing out some antiquated 100-year-old or 70-year-old provisions, and really focusing on being able to have a modernized focus organization that both the mayor and the council can have flexibility going forward. I think that those are all advantageous to the city at large, and we can better serve, the whole point is to better serve the community. So that would be really, you know, I don't know if anybody wants to further discuss, but I would make the motion that we first adopt the amendments recommended by the -- I would make the motion that we first adopt the amendments recommended by the Rules and Ordinance Committee for this paper. And so, I mean, that'd be my first recommendation.
We have some lights.
Yeah.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. I just wanted to say, yeah, this has been a long process, and I only joined it a few years ago, and definitely feel it moving this year. There was a lot of movement, so I want to thank everybody who's involved in that. I'm not on the committee, but I went to all the meetings. But I also want to recognize that in hindsight too, like, yeah, I put on my Facebook page when we're talking about the charter, but it would have been, of course, it's always better when you get public input, so I just want to acknowledge that. It would have been great if we did that. I understand how it did take us a long time here, but thinking back, it would have been great if we had some community involvement. But again, it's not, I just wanted to acknowledge that and always thank our residents when, you know, they come forward with public comment, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Condon.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to go to a few of the meetings and a lot of work went into this The Charter Commission Committee did a terrific job along with support from the Ordinance Committee, and particularly Ron Hogan and Nelson Miller, both deserve a lot of credit for putting the effort in that they did. So thank everybody on the job you did.
Counsel Winslow.
I said Counsel Winslow.
So before we take any votes, I'm in favor of the proposal from Counsel Winslow in terms of how to, to move forward tonight. And so the proposal is to, to make the changes based on the recommendations from committee, enroll it, but then not ordain it, and wait for the charter petition to be amended and drafted by our legal department and then sent to the legislature for action. You know, hearing the public comments from our constituents tonight, I'm wondering if in the middle of all that, we could do some more public engagement. And that could be maybe a public hearing, or maybe just having another presentation where we highlight some of the changes in less of the legalese and more of just like the layman's language. And then if something like really notable comes out of those public engagement sessions, we always have the option to, you know, change the ordinance, unenroll it and re-enroll it, or just change the ordinance after. Because the big thing here is getting it out of the charter. We can always make tweaks to the, to the ordinance after, but it's really just getting it out of the charter so that we can make some more of these changes. That would just be something that I would maybe propose, isn't in the intermediary, try to do some more public engagement, maybe have a public hearing, another presentation. I don't think it's going to hurt, and it probably could only add, you know, more, more support. And I don't, and I hope it doesn't, and I don't think it would, would delay the process. Counsel McDonald and Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I was actually thinking along very similar lines. I also think that it would be very helpful, so once we have this enrolled, to really like put this in a digestible format for the general public. I just think there's been so many pieces flying around, it's hard to know where we're landing. But having a public forum on this and on the need for charter changes, I think demonstrates good faith to the legislature that we are working on this in full public view and asking for public support. I will say, you know, in case this is not clear, my experience of all of the meetings has been that we are very much trying to not ask major structural questions about things that should change. We are instead trying to take things as they currently operate and bring them back into a place where we can manage them in an ordinance basis. I think the Parks Commission is probably the one exception to that of having a separate Parks Commission, and is certainly something that I know has received a lot of public comment. So I recognize there will have to be more process on that just to get it up and going. But I think that the, that it's important for the public to hear that the goal here for these charter changes is not to, to approach this with a bunch of different new ideas. It's instead to just kind of capture where we're at and put that in a manageable format. And in fact, many great ideas showed up at that table that we said, you know what, this is not the place to do it because we're trying to stay focused on the charter changes, but that's a good idea and we should talk about that and we should do that another time. So maybe also just flagging some areas for future conversation. I suspect those are likely to come up as well, that we can perhaps engage in the years ahead and get, and get that in the media, you know, get that in our local media and all the ways that we get the word out so that folks know that those conversations are happening. So I, this also has my full support. I really appreciate the diligence and care that has brought us to this point, and I'm excited for that level of public engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Winslow, and then I see you, Counsel Spetafora, you had your hand up earlier. I'll go to you right after Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, so my, my thought is like, you know, let's, I mean, the great thing is, I think one of the struggles we had before doing more public input is that we didn't really have enough consensus on the council to even put something to the public to put out there. So I think that, you know, if we enroll it, that gives us something to, you know, put out there, say, this is our plan to go forward, get input on that. So, you know, my suggestion is that we would, I mean, that could wait, I mean, it could come out after we enroll. It could wait until we get the home rule, the draft home rule petition, because ultimately we as a council have to vote on the home rule petition and sign off on it. So, so maybe the, the public hearing could be done either by the Charter Review Committee in approving the, the final home rule petition, or when we come back to council. But I think some of it, to have the enrollment happen tonight is just to give something that we know is generally supportive, because my understanding, one of the things with the home rule petition is that, that the legislature really looks for, you know, a strong, maybe not a consensus, but a strong backing. It's not, you know, a split vote. They really want to see a very strong backing. So, so my, you know, I think we can have that opportunity to have some hearing and we can put that presentation together. So, yeah.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I'm in support of enrolling. I was saying between enrollment and, and.
And the final vote, yeah.
And the, and the, the request to the legislature, let's do some more public engagement, and then I think that kind of is the best of both worlds.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, I would, my thought is to have one, you know, let's get this together, put one presentation. I'm not, I don't want to create the impression we're going to have another five meetings on each section or whatever, so.
I completely understand.
You know, to see, you know, if there's that taste, we can go from there. But I'd, I'd say let's do one and see where the public goes on that.
Agreed. Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Spetafora, did you have, did you want to speak? You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. I do, I was, I was, not to be repetitive, but I was thinking the same thing, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Winslow, I think we copied exactly like we do the budget. We have a requirement before the budget is finally voted on to have a public hearing. We do it before a scheduled council meeting. I think you keep that very refined to the areas that have been talked about, maybe what is, what is the actual writing, what is being proposed, have public comment, allow the residents to make any changes on those specific areas. So if there is anything that we think is prudent or maybe a better idea of looking at it from a different angle, we can at least change that before the final sending it off to the, to the state. So I look at it just like, just copy the way we do our budget, right? It's a $225 million document that we vote on every year and we have a public hearing, and I think we should do it the same way.
Thank you, Counsel Spetafora. So with that, do I have any other lights? No, I think Counsel, Counsel Winslow, you made a motion to accept the committee report.
To amend the paper based on the recommendations of the committee.
To amend the paper based on the recommendations of the committee, seconded by Counselor Semenelli. Oh, Crowe, she got mad at me last time for not calling her. Counsel Crowe.
As long as someone did.
The clerk will call the roll.
On the motion to amend Paper 443, Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli. Counsel Spetafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. It is amended.
And then I make a motion to enroll as amended? The paper is amended.
So on Counsel Winslow's motion to enroll is amended, seconded by Counsel Semenelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spetafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. And that, that is enrolled unanimously. And just to clarify to the public about what that actually means, I think that we spoke about what we were doing and how that was going to, so in order to, to change an ordinance, it's a two-step process, kind of like first reading, second reading. So our first reading is to enroll the ordinance. We then have to, we usually wait a week or more to then ordain it, which would be the final action. What we're doing now is we're enrolling it, but we're not going to ordain it for as long as it takes for the legislature to, for one, for us to have this hearing, two, have our petition drafted. We will vote on the petition and then have that referred up to the legislature for approval.
But we're actually going to ordain it at the same time we send it to the legislature.
But we just ordained it.
We, what, yeah.
And we enrolled it.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
So we enrolled it, but the plan is to actually ordain it at the same time as it gets, so the ordinance will be ordained pending approval of the home rule petition. So it won't become effective, but we have to.
Okay, so.
On Carol Anne's recommendation, we need to ordain it at the same time.
So we just enrolled it. We'll do some more public engagement until we have the final vote for the home rule petition that will go to the state legislature. And at that same meeting, we're going to ordain pending approval of the home rule petition that gets sent up.
Yeah.
So I think that is kind of getting the benefit of everything. The process is not going to be slowed down any, any more than it already has been. And I think I'll also state that, as Counsel Winslow did say, we have been working on some form of charter revision since 2019. The pandemic changed our view of things and changed the priority. We decided to focus on some of the areas of our ordinance that are the most in need of some reform, primarily boards and commissions and general structure. So I appreciate the work of the Charter Committee and ordinance, and I'll hand it back off to Counsel Winslow?
Next order.
Yeah.
Was it going to be next order of business or clerk will read the next paper?
Paper 85-25, the Rules and Ordinance Committee will meet to discuss a proposal for the potential reorganization of the Health and Human Services and Inspection Services Department. Having completed that task, the recommendation for this paper is to place on file.
All right. So, yeah, so, yeah, we, in the process of talking about Health and Human Services and that type of thing, we, the initial paper was conceptual, so now we've come up with the actual ordinances, so I think that's why we're just placing this on file. So just make a motion to place that initial conceptual paper on file.
On Counsel Winslow's motion to place it on file, seconded by Counsel Semenelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Seega is not in the room. Counsel Semenelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spetafora.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
All right.
Next order of business.
158-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title II, Chapter 12 and 16, and Title IX, Chapter 16, are hereby amended as noted in the body of said paper effective upon the successful passage of a home rule petition approving corresponding amendments to the city charter.
Counsel Winslow.
All right. So this is the set of ordinances that focus on doing some restructuring related to the Inspection Services Department and what will be now the Health and Human Services Department. So that's the main thrust, just the overall perception. Right now, we have inspections under building and inspection services. We have some health inspectors that go out and inspect things. We actually have our compliance officers. So we basically have three sets of different inspectors that often are enforcing codes and that type of thing. A lot of other cities, what they've done is put all their inspection personnel under the Department of, Department of Inspection Services. So that is one key aspect of that, this is that we will have our health inspectors that go out and go to restaurants or do tobacco control enforcement. Those will actually all operate under the Inspection Services Department. The, you know, the compliance officers that sort of, sort of actually report to us in a way, they will actually be reporting through the, you know, the Inspection Services Department. So that's a key thing in terms of inspection services. You know, it gives a bigger role, but then there's some consistency there that, you know, you know, that way, you know, there'll be, you know, we have like the, you know, the various licensing things or various things related to businesses. That way, that's all done under one department. And then the Health Department, the role of inspections will be, be changed, but they will still sort of be a key role in terms of, the Board of Health will be under their wings. So in terms of permitting and creating regulations related to businesses that are related to, under the responsibility of Board of Health, they will be responsible for that. But then it'll be also responsible for human services activities like, you know, the senior center, the teen center, and the veteran service coordinator. So, so that's really an emphasis. And then even like multilingual, so it's really just creating emphasis of having the role of Health and Human Services will be creating the rules and running services like vaccinations and stuff like that. It'll be a little bit less going into restaurants and that type of thing. So that, that's just in general what the plan is. And the other, and so finally, so by doing, by doing this, this whole review, we realized that under the charter, we have some inspectional things, like the compliance officers and the wiring inspector are in the charter. So what the Charter Review Committee recommended during our meetings was to actually span, expand the scope of the home rule petition to also eliminate provisions related to them that would be really helpful to this reorganization as well. It just made sense that if we're going to go home, do a home rule petition, that's, that's dealing with the first set of kind of antiquated provisions, we might as well add the three provisions that, that are impacted by this. Like the, technically, you know, under state law, Boards of Health, there's a, there's a couple of state law provisions that you can have a health commissioner in the city or you can have a Board of Health. We technically, our charter gives this, the mayor and the city council to the authority to set up our Board of Health. So our Board of Health is sort of this entity that doesn't technically exist under state law, although they, they use all those powers. So the thought is we will eliminate that provision of our charter and just that our Board of Health will be simply a state, you know, follow the state law and we'll establish it that way. So, so that's, that's just some of the context of, you know, we're just, again, it's a little bit of reorganization, but then it's also by eliminating some antiquated provisions in the charter just helps. So I don't know if people have questions or comments, so that's what's, that's going on, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
To Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just, I don't know, I was just thinking out loud. So if you're, so for instance, the Board of Health Director, so you would be taking some of those responsibilities that he has now, he or she has now, and then putting them on the Inspection Services Director. So I just would like, you know, just if someone can clarify for me, under the classification, usually like the amount of money that people are getting paid because of the responsibilities that they undertake in the course of their duties. If you're taking that away, aren't you like putting more responsibility on somebody else and less on, less on someone?
Uh, you know.
Would that change, almost like an impact bargain thing with the, because they're all union members, Local 25, the directors, right?
So I think for the actual inspectors, there's still going to be, you know, people that are building inspectors. There's going to be health inspectors, there's going to be compliance officers. Their duties aren't really changing, it's just who they report to is changing. So that's, that's, it's not expanding their duties. The duties of the, you know, the, Nelson Miller is headed in Special Service Department, his, he's getting more reports. So, and then the Health and Human.
So he's taking on more responsibility, is that a sense?
So that, so that's something, you know, that, that is subject to some negotiation. Nelson sat in the meetings, he supported it.
Right.
So.
I'm just saying, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's a, if that's something that could come up down the road when it comes to impact bargaining with the CBAs, with the unions, under management and directors, saying, well, look. the CBA's, with the unions, under management and directors, saying, well, look, you know, you're giving this guy, our guy more responsibilities, our union member, more responsibilities, therefore, you know, other cities and towns increase their, their payroll, their, which I don't have a problem with it when the time comes. I'm just saying, I don't know if this would spark that, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, you know, we did talk, at least in terms of the individual staff, that, that, you know, the, the, the staff, like the health agents and the, you know, inspection service people and the, the compliance officers, their, their roles don't change, it's just who they report to. So, um, that, it's, it, there is, you know, I think for, you know, Nelson Miller, Special Services, so, you know, he's aware of it, he was in the meetings.
No, I understand, I, I understand all that.
And then I think one of the key things is that what we're doing right now at the moment, one, one of the key things driving this reorganization is that, you know, Chris Webb's stepping down as the Health Director. And what we want to do is that, what, you know, this is already out for, for, um, you know, the, the position's being announced, but we want to make sure because the role of this new person we're trying to hire is changing, that that, the new job description had this new role in there. So to be, you know, yes, they're overseeing, you know, vaccinations and, and overseeing, you know, nursing and other type of things, but then they're also seeing the, overseeing these other things. Just to make clear that, you know, they're not overseeing the health inspector. So that, we just, that was the time to do it because the position's open and that, that was really what was driving this, that, um, it was to make sure. So I, I don't, I think it's, you know, Nelson's there right now, so the, the new, whoever gets hired is this new Health and Human Service person, they're coming in knowing what their new job responsibilities is and what the salary is, so I don't think there's an issue there. And Nelson's been, you know, willing to take on this new role. So I, I think it's.
No, and, and that's fine. And, you know, Nelson being okay with it is okay. I mean, you know, Nelson does a great job. I'm saying down the road, when it comes to collective bargaining agreements with the union, that could be an argument for them to make and say, look, you know, you've put more responsibilities on this person, so therefore, you know, we see that person should be getting paid comparable to other communities that that same role applies to, they get paid X amount of dollars. I mean, I'm okay with it when, when the time comes. I'm just saying, it could trigger, uh, a CBA type of, um, impact bargaining language back and forth on, on that issue. But I mean, I'm okay with it if everybody else.
I, I think the way this is structured is that, that may be, you know, the Director of Inspection Services might have that, that claim, and I don't know, you know, that they might have that, but I think the thing is the individual inspectors, it's not, they're not really being any.
No, but the responsibility to the director is more responsible because they gotta, so that, so if I'm, I'm usually going out and I'm inspecting restaurants and I'm, I'm reporting to, um, Chris Webb, now I'm reporting to Nelson Miller, that's more responsibility for Nelson. And I know they're adding more to human services too, but.
Okay, okay. So I, I think that we've, I think that we both, we're all in agreement. Um, I think, I think that the, the conversation, I think, I think we all are aware of this. Uh, it actually is one of the reasons why when we were talking about this, I actually said, you know, when we were talking about our transportation commi- commission or our transportation committee, they were talking about putting the Director of Inspection Services on that. I had actually said, I don't think it's the best use of your time to also you put on this particular board and commission. So Counselor Simonelli, I, I agree with you. It was vetted in committee, though the conversations were had. And as, as Counselor Winslow stated, you know, Ron Hogan, as well as Nelson Miller, were actively participating and suggested this, uh, this structure.
Good.
All right, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor McDonald? Hold on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to express my gratitude and support for this approach, um, that the mayor is bringing forward. I think it does a lot of really good things all at the same time. Um, I think just for starters, reducing the number of direct reports to the mayor and bringing more coordination among these different, you know, smaller, um, departments and, and agencies and so on is, is a, is a great thing and an opportunity. I think that the additional attention and focus that the public health nurses, that addiction recovery and support, um, and other public health outreach will receive, uh, by framing the, I know we already have technically a Department of Health and Human Services, but I think the increased emphasis here is, is really meaningful. And, um, and bringing in language access support too, as a part of that, um, really provides, uh, an opportunity for us to have a holistic way of engaging our diverse community about their human services and, and, and diverse, there's so many different types of needs, um, that we can have some better coordination around. And I think that's so true in the way that the city works and can even work, can, can always even continue to work better with our many community organizations doing parallel work, of which Malden is blessed to have so many, from the Warming Center and Bread of Life to Elliot, um, and ABCD. And so just having all of that really like centralized and focused, uh, I'm excited for the opportunity to bring in a, a director who we're really selecting for that. You know, we thank Director Webb for his service and, and wish him well in retirement. And I, I think this is a, I think this is a great opportunity. So I'm very supportive of this. I also think that it makes a lot of sense to bring together the various inspectional pieces so that we can better utilize our staff time and be more consistent in the way we're approaching our residents and be consistent, more consistent in the way we as counselors reach out to raise inspectional and compliance issues. So for all of those reasons, I just think this is a really smart way to move, um, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to support it and the staff involved. Thank you.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, at the risk of being a little bit redundant to what Counselor McDonald just said, I did just want to, you know, share that perspective that I think in, in terms of streamlining things and bringing very similar duties under one umbrella, I think it makes a lot of sense. And, you know, when I first had read this proposal, I had some questions, I was like not a hundred percent sold, but the more that I really read through it and thought through, you know, particularly as a ward counselor, when you get, let's say you have, um, a problematic property with a, you know, absentee landlord, it's becoming an issue for the neighborhood, you know, you have to talk to inspectional services, compliance team, Board of Health, sometimes police, sometimes fire. Um, it's just, you add all of these folks onto one email chain and then we sort of pick and choose which is the most urgent or, or low-hanging fruit issue to go after first and then sort of build a case. This feels like it'll pull everybody onto one team, not that we don't all act as a team already, but it, it brings everybody into kind of one place so that when you have these myriad issues that present and then often, you know, you might encounter folks who need services, whether that's language, very often, language access is the next thing that I find myself needing to pull in when there's a Board of Health-related complaint, um, or addiction support services. Having those folks all on one team, it just, it made a complete sense to me. And I think the behind-the-scenes part that's efficient for residents and taxpayers to hear too is that it brings all the systems into one. So currently, these departments use different technology, different equipment, they'll all be on the same, you know, I don't know what you call those things, but they, they'll be able to basically go out with sort of like those keypads that connect right into the database back at City Hall, enter information in real time, so everybody's working with the same info. Um, there's much less subjectivity to how things were handled, there's more documentation. So I think it'll actually improve residents' experience. It'll certainly improve counselors' experience of trying to connect folks to services and solve issues, but I think that those who call City Hall are gonna get a faster answer and those teams are going to be consistently, you know, managed, same expectations, same tools, same tech. Um, so I'm definitely supportive of this and I think it'll be something that folks will, will see the value of as we get into it.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, is there a motion? Counselor Winslow?
All right, so, um, yeah, so a motion to amend the paper, um, uh, based on the, uh, Rules and Ordinance Committee recommendations?
It wasn't amended, it was drafted in committee.
Oh, wow, so I think, uh, this was just, what the city clerk is saying that it doesn't need to be amended, it just needs to be enrolled.
All right, so then, all right, so to enroll.
Maybe just to, because we've already accepted the committee report.
All right, okay. All right, okay, okay, all right, good, so, all right.
So on Counselor, on Counselor.
Motion's to enroll the paper as recommended by the committee.
Seconded by Counselor Seega, all those in favor, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spetafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay.
That is enrolled.
A couple more things to do here, stay with me. So, um, all right, so we have to, um, the Charter Review Committee, uh, based on that paper, made some recommendations on three charter deletions, um, to delete Section 23F related to plumbing inspector from the charter, to, um, delete Section 23G related code enforcement inspector, and to delete Section 32, um, specifying the Board of Health. So I, my, my motion would be to, uh, direct that the legal department and the Charter Review Committee draft a home rule petition with those additional, um, deletions and then addend the papers as enrolled.
Um, so I have, I, I understand the referral to legal for drafting. Where, where is this other language about the other deletions?
That was at the end of the, um, the Health and Human Services Reorganization Paper.
Okay, so it, it is included in something that's on this agenda?
Yeah, it's like page 11 of the, um, of the Health and, and Health and Inspections Ordinance Updates Edits as of March 18th, so it's the final page.
Okay, so, I, so I'm just from an open meeting law perspective, I want to make sure that we're referring back to it. Okay, so based on the recommendations of the Health and, and Inspections Ordinance Updates Edits as of March 18th, you're, uh, could you repeat again, uh, what, what sections you're recommending be removed?
So, yeah, the Charter Review Committee recommend, recommended the, these additional deletions be added to the home rule petition. Um, Section 23F concerning the plumbing inspector, Section 23G concerning code enforcement inspector, and Section 32 related to the Board of Health.
Okay, so on Counselor Winslow's motion to refer this to legal for drafting of the home rule petition as proposed, um, by the Charter Review Committee, uh, Commission or Committee, uh, with the addition, additional three, uh, sections to be removed, 23F, 23G, and what was the last one?
Section 32.
Section 32, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes. Any conversation on that motion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spetafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That is a.
Thank you for your patience and, but great work of everybody who participated and, uh, yeah, thank you for, uh, Ron Hogan and Nelson and Carol Anne and, uh, everybody on the committees for their thoughtful input that, uh, this is a great step forward and we'll look forward to, um, seeing the home rule, draft home rule petition and having that public hearing, uh, before we go proceed, so thank you very much.
Yes, I want to, I want to echo your, your thanks to, to Ron and the administration and, and the entire council, as well as you, Counselor Winslow, for helping shepherd this. You were absolutely pushing this along, uh, to, to the city, to the city clerk who also serves as a member of our, of our Charter Committee, you know, it wouldn't have been possible without you and our clerk of committees. With that, uh, the docket is clear. Any personal privilege?
Second.
Counselor, Counselor Simonelli, uh, and then, and we already have motions to adjourn on.
Kind of jumped the gun there, didn't you? I'll be quick about it. I just, I want to just thank, uh, Bob Akim, the mayor's office, uh, DPW Director Bobby Knox, and all the people that came out and helped clean up Lincoln Commons, uh, this past Saturday, a little, uh, little cleanup, starting like Operation Beautification in Ward Seven, and, uh, it was great to see everybody come out and the park looked good before we started, now it even looks better. So I just want to say thank you to everybody and, uh, see you next time. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, um, so following up on that, um, we will be, um, at the Salemwood School